Wake up and good evening. We call this Monday, February 12th, 2024 City Council Meeting of Order, 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Rash.
President.
Counselor Campbell.
President.
Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor DeBarna.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Minton.
President.
President Kane.
President.
Eight members, you have four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please stand, observe a moment of silence, please use this moment as you will. Please turn to the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, where we are under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed to acknowledge their permission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
Number one, 2024-019, an appropriation for five million.
Motion to waive the reading from Counselor Liang.
Finance Committee, oh, hello, hi, there we go. I'd like to make a motion to move this into Finance Committee and advertise as well.
Okay, motion to move this appropriation into Finance. Do I have a second? Second from Counselor Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number two, 2024-020, an appropriation for 600,000 to hotel motel tax tourism from hotel motel tax open space.
Thank you very much. The President recognizes Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. President, thank you very much. Very excited to pose to this body an initial tranche of funding through our hotel motel tax to help us plan and program the 400th anniversary of Quincy settlement, which is coming up next year. Before you, I did submit a memo with some of the detail. More than happy to walk through that a little bit, Mr. President, if that's the body's wish, or open it right up to questions.
Would you be so kind just to highlight the most important parts, which is what's going on in this account? And you've just talked about what it's going to be used for, but just about, I know that in years prior, the hotel motel tax had been down during COVID times, but it's now gone up. So just to
Sure.
highlight what we're working with here.
Sure. You also have with you tonight some projections and two dates from the Municipal Finance Department, exactly as you said, Mr. President, since the pandemic, the hotel motel tax, which is a fee paid by guests at our four or five hotels that we have in the city. That has really bounced back in a great way. Our hotels are full, which is a good sign overall, and it's provided a level of flexibility that has opened up a good deal of space within the fund that is going to be able to help us plan for the Quincy 400, as well as a number of other items. Mr. Mason and Mr. Kosha from Municipal Finance are here this evening. If anybody has any questions relative to the revenue, the status of the hotel motel tax fund, or anything money related. As for the specifics, the memo includes a high level, and I know it is high level, outline of where we expect this first tranche of funding to go. A bulk of that will go into programming, you know, the sort of things we're talking about, major concert series, lecture series, historic programs in the schools, those sorts of things. That's where we're sort of looking at right now, where the biggest piece of this will go. That being said, as I noted, this is, this is high level. We don't know what we don't know at this point, and part of the goal of this exercise is to provide the seed money where we'll have some availability within the next couple of months, and the ability within the next couple of months to come up with a firm schedule, a calendar, the detailed breakdown of all the programs that we're going to do. As I noted in the memo, this is really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we're going to do everything we can to make this a memorable experience for the city. With that, I think Counselor, if the body has questions, I'm more than happy.
The President recognizes Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in reviewing the materials, I had followed up with Mr. Walker, and I'd like to just have a sort of continuation of that, that conversation, if we could. So, I mean, I know, I just want to say that Dagney has done an incredible job. The last couple of years, just hearing, you know, churning on the radio and listening to GBH and hearing commercials about, you know, coming to Quincy and all the things that folks can do here, scrolling social media feeds and seeing things posted, you know, about tourism in Quincy as well. I mean, so she's really, even before, you know, the planning of Quincy 400, has again gotten really aggressive with making sure that Quincy is on the map for folks, and I have no doubt that that has a big part to, to do with why our hotel motel revenues are back up. And I know that with Quincy 400 now, being something else to promote on top of that is only going to continue to drive that. So I am really excited about this. I'm just more curious, as we talked about earlier, about process, right? So if we could just start with, logistically, I see here, and I apologize for not looking into this sooner, but why are there two separate appropriations for this? Because we're looking to move essentially this first 600,000 from hotel motel into tourism, it looks like, and then from there to Quincy 400. But logistically, what are the two separate items on here? And what is that process?
Through you, Mr. President, if it's okay. I'm going to defer to Mr. Mason quickly on that. It's a, it's a bookkeeping issue, but it's, it's spot on.
Good evening, Counselor. Yes, to, to re-quote the Chief of Staff, it is a bookkeeping issue. The way the law, the home rule petition is structured is it creates two funds. One is account 4512, and one is 4513. What the law says is that historic preservation must, cannot expense any less than 15%. And historic preservation and tourism are one account. The other is open, open space. Since this is under tourism, we're moving where the bulk of that funding goes, 85% of all hotel motel tax, into the Tourism and Historic Preservation Fund, Fund 4513, so that it can be properly expensed and conforming with what that initial home rule petition.
Got it. So the two separators are really just a housekeeping measure to properly, under compliance, move the 600,000 from a hotel motel to the Quincy 400.
Correct. The example, when the Chief of Staff and I were talking, I said, it's like having money in your savings account, you got to move to your checking account to write a check.
Sure.
It's still 600,000.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then I'd also just like to know how we got to 600,000. And so, again, just, we don't know what we don't know. I know that there's been a lot of work done on this on background, and so it'd just be helpful to know how we got to this number. I understand it's an estimate, it's not exact, but again, just some historic context, I think would be helpful.
Through you, Mr. President. It's a couple of factors, Counselor. One is availability within the revenue. As I noted in the memo, by no means is $600,000 going to cover the entirety of what the city is going to be programming next year. It's our hope that this funding is the leverage that we can use to facilitate private donations, corporate sponsorships, those sorts of things. So part of it was a function of what we knew we would have available and still provide a good measure of flexibility within the hotel motel tax. The other piece of this, probably to a little bit of a lesser degree, is the amount of work and planning that has already gone on to date. Several years ago, so Quincy 400 is sort of broken into two things. Prior to the pandemic, many of you may remember, the city embarked on a pretty large-scale community planning exercise relative to Quincy 400, asking the community what they wanted to see in our community in 2025, what kind of place they wanted Quincy to be. We had, you know, more than a dozen community charrettes across the city. We issued an online survey and came up with a pretty nice master plan in a general sense for the city going forward. And that was part one. Part two is, all right, we've done the, we've done sort of the planning exercise, what, how are we going to celebrate this, and how are we really going to make it an occasion for the city to remember and for it to remember for generations to come? And that's where we are now. So over the last six months to a year, there's been a group, including Dagney, folks in the mayor's office, business leaders, they've been meeting on a regular basis, figuring out what the year wants to be for the city. And as outlined in the memo, we know some basics of what we want to do. We definitely want to do a major program, a major concert, most likely a major lecture series, historic programming within the schools, which we know is going to cost a little bit of money to make happen. Museum exhibits, specialty attractions that we've looked into, that we're finalizing the budget details on. For example, the, the Massachusetts Constitution, which was written here in Quincy by John Adams, it is kept in town, but, you know, is there a possibility that as one of a week's worth of celebrations next year, do we have the Massachusetts Constitution here? Those are the sorts of things we're looking at. If you look at a major concert series, we've, we've gone through that path before, and we have some historic knowledge of how much money that requires. You know, that is a six-figure, potentially a seven-figure endeavor to do something at that scale. So again, everything here is based on specifics, but at the same time, high level, that, I go back to the concert series, or the major event type of things that we're going to have, that we're going to do with, with personalities or notable people from the community. That's going to require us most likely to go out and enlist a professional booking agent. We've talked to a couple already. There are people in that world. We're not in that world, booking acts and, and names that can fill a 7,000-seat stadium. There are people who you can basically give the date, the capacity, and the setup, and they can go find a menu for the city to choose from of people that would be available to do that. So that's sort of the level where we're at right now, Counselor.
Okay. And then you had mentioned, thank you, by the way, for that context, and you mentioned also that there's going to be efforts made for outside funding sources, so that we're not taking it from the hotel motel tax, which is also coming from an outside source. But, so before you start doing that, I assume that's going to be, you know, some more exact and sort of more closely defined numbers put together, right? Is that going to be brought in front of us again, or like, do we have another sort of opportunity to sort of follow this progress? What does that look like?
Through you, Mr. President, yes. Absolutely, we'll be back before this body. My expectation is that the calendar and a great deal of low-level design, if you will, on what we're planning will be ready before the council breaks. And I think you hit on a good point relative to the private potential corporate sponsorships. There's some legality issues involved there as well. The city has to walk a line to a certain extent. We have outside agencies that'll be able to handle some of that, the Quincy Historic Society, those sorts of things. But when it comes to that, the outside funding, people are going to want to see some meat on the bone before they commit to six figures, seven figures, whatever it's going to be. And that's sort of the, the onus for this funding right now, to get us to a place where we can bring to whoever that major act, or whoever those major corporate sponsors are, and say, this is what we have plans, this is how we can incorporate your firm and your sponsorship, and this is what it would mean for you. I think, going around the well, I think everyone could probably name five or six places in the city of Quincy that would be perfect targets for some serious corporate sponsorship based upon the history of the community and the history of, of, of business in this community. And so, but we need to have some, some there, there to start with, and that's where we're coming from with this request.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And again, when we had first spoken, it sounds like this is really just a starting point and not certainly the endpoint, but I appreciate that we will have opportunities to be engaged, you know, along the process, as well as numbers get finalized. The last set of questions I have is just about accounting. I'm just curious, how much is currently in the account? And then second question to that is, how much do we project would be in the count for fiscal year '24? And are we sort of, you know, following that right now? Like, are we bringing in what we projected we would bring in for this, for this line item?
Absolutely, Counselor. So currently in the fund, there's two point, approximately 2.8 million, 2.78 million. The two previous quarters have been, actually, the two highest quarters we ever gotten in hotel motel tax, 672,000, 650,000 respectively. This quarter coming up, quarter three, is the weakest performing quarter. It's not a surprise, people don't like to come to this area of the country in this weather. So that means, using some of the sensitivity modeling, we probably project another 500, 540,000. And then in Q, fiscal Q4, we should project another about 670,000. So by the end of the fiscal year, we should have, let's say this, you guys, the body did not vote on this, it would have a fund balance of approximately $3.9 million. If the body decided to vote on this, it would be compared to the fiscal year, 3.3 million. There's also approximately, there's 2.098 million dollars in debt service responsible to the fund right now. That, currently, there's about 1.2 million left in the remainder of this fiscal year. During the last two budget cycles, due to the low balance of the fund, the general fund supported the debt service out of this fund because it was barred under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, which basically means it's a general obligation bond. So the, even when the, the fund was depreciated because of COVID, it's still the obligation of the city to fulfill it, if, when you use that statute. There's also Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, 53J, which is a revenue bond, which this isn't. So we, if the body decides to make that debt payment out of this fund, then it would be looking at approximately 1.3, sorry, 2.1 million dollars left in the fund. If it decides to make also the payment, if it decides to take the entire debt service that was for F24, then it would be approximately 1.1 million.
Okay.
Counselor, if I may.
Yeah, please.
That was, that was a lot you just threw at us, so I want to like, break it down real quick. Because the fiscal year ends at the end of June of this year, right?
Yes, Counselor.
Most people think in terms of the whole year 2024. So you just said that there's probably about 1.1 that's going to come in, in this half of a calendar year, but the quarters three and four for fiscal year 2024.
Four, correct, Counselor.
Right. Okay, so we take 600 out now, that'll put us at 2.1 something, right? But then we're going to put another 1.1 back in over the next two quarters.
Yeah, hopefully, maybe even more, Counselor.
Okay. And then was there, did you say there was a projection for the first two quarters of '25 fiscal year?
Yes, we, we have projections all the way up to 2020, 2035 for this.
Well, let's just, let's just do this.
I would expect in those two quarters to be about 1.3 million dollars.
Okay. And then you talked about, so we bonded something against the, this account.
Yes.
So we're paying debt service on that.
Correct.
And so what did we bond in this account?
We have four outstanding notes. They are land acquisition back in 2004. That bond will probably mature next, the third quarter of next fiscal year. There's a park improvement bond that was relative to some small playgrounds worked before the CPA did their large one. The Hancock Adams green up front.
Okay.
Then we did some large-scale paving for basketball courts, and I think we also redid some street hockey courts, too. And then there was an additional round of paving that was done. I think there was, I believe that was a split appropriation between two fiscal years.
Okay.
Well, it appears twice.
And what's that amount per year?
Per year is $2,091,000.
The debt service on the entire account?
Correct.
Okay. So, so saying we take this six, 2.1, then you said, I'm sorry, what is it again?
Oh, $2,091,000.
Okay. So there's still stuff coming in, but it's basically clearing the whole thing?
Yes.
Between 600 and this 2.1?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify all that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. President. That's actually, so you, you know me well enough now to know sort of where I was going. But that's what I was curious about, is making sure that, you know, when we had planned originally last year for this year's budget for this line item, that we are going to bring in at least what we had projected, right, if not more, obviously, ideally. And then from that, right, that's one question that I have, is making sure that we're going to hit the goal that we set out to. Because when we plan for fiscal year '24, we're planning for certain revenues to cover things that we want to do in fiscal year '24. I assume, obviously, there was planning for Quincy 400, when we looked at, okay, well, what kind of revenues can we bring in to cover that, right? And if that is the case, great, but let's make sure that we're on target then to hit those goals, because if we're not, then I think this is a different conversation. So that's, I appreciate you sort of recapping all of that information, because that's exactly what my line of thinking was, is to make sure that we're on target to hit what it is that we budgeted. And even if we are on target, then given everything that's supposed to come out of this account with that planning for this fiscal year, do we have enough to cover all of that?
Yes. We certainly have enough to cover, to cover this, even with debt payment, even with a considerable healthy margin for the next two quarters of tax revenue. Actually, both quarters could be covered below 50% of their mark, and we'd still have enough money to cover this for this fiscal year with a full debt payment.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, as well, for helping to clarify that.
Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I did have a question, you know, there's a lot of speculation, I'm sure, on this, but, you know, as this goes, this is going to have a positive impact for what this will bring in, Quincy 400, right? So have you done any models on that to figure out what the, the impact this will have on the, the community? I don't know if that's something for you. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I'm sure the chief can, can certainly fill this in, and a more call for me than myself. But the city employs in-plan modeling. So if you ever heard in any discussion, this X project creates X, X number of jobs, that's a well-known type of, it's called input-output model, named in-plan. I mean, even if you look at some of the stuff the state puts out when it comes to gambling or anything like that, on, you know, the economic benefit of that, they're using in-plan modeling, if you look in the footnotes. We will employ that also. Right now, we're kind of in a, we, we need to define what type of events we're going to have, what type of concerts are we going to have, what type of charrettes are we going to have. But it's already built out that we can, as we plug that in, and see the impact of that public investment. And in the private, and in the private donations, too, to what that benefits to the city. Right now, the biggest industries that are most likely to, you'll see positive growth, I'm sure it's not surprising to any of the counselors, it's going to be in hospitalities, it's going to be restaurants, it's going to be hotel, hotel motels, stuff like that. So, but as we get more defined, we'll be able to start applying specific examples of these output models and what they benefit to the community.
Do you have, do you have any estimates as to what that might be?
It depends, it depends on what the direct investment is. Right now, we're seeing about every $1 investment producing between, like, about $2.17 and a little over $3.00. That's really, really early on, and kind of blanket. It's probably going to be more than that, but I'm going to go with the most conservative output I have right now. So if we, if we do 600,000, it wouldn't surprise me to see $1.8 million in additional economic activity. It's important to contextualize, the city does about $3.3 billion in economic activity a year. So that's still pretty impressive. If you're putting 600,000, you're getting, you're getting about half a percent of where we go, shock output. But I would say about 1.8 million of just the 600,000 is likely to produce an activity.
And I guess maybe for the, for the chief, is, is there a plan for, as far as the, the plan of events, is it going to be one a month, one a week? Is there going to be ongoing events, or is it something that's going to be, you know, one giant event and a few other small ones? You know, is there a plan for that yet, or?
Through you, Mr. President, yes. All of the above, Counselor. I think, and again, the part of why we're here is to get to the ability to actually farm out, not farm out, but frame out that calendar. It's certainly going to be all year. I would suggest monthly something, absolutely. There are going to be things that are just going from the first part of the year to the end of the year, the educational programs in the schools, that's just going to go. You know, the heritage tree program and the signage program, those aren't, you know, events per se, but they're part of this, and those are just gonna, as the plan and the projects themselves flesh themselves out, those are just going to go. That's going to be an all-year thing. So you could have, you know, X amount of trees, heritage trees, with the story that goes with them. You could have, you know, one every other week for a certain amount of time, but we're doing that. I mean, this is going to be, and that's why, part of this as well, there's, there's definitely going to be a need for some project management, particularly when it comes to the calendar, because we got to be careful not running up against, and this body well knows, the, the community events, the major events that happen in the city every year. You know, we got to make sure we fill those, make sure we're cognizant and respectful not to put anything that, that already happens on a regular basis and is good for the city, you know, sort of on a back burner. So we do have to be very, very careful with the calendar. But I think over the next several months, to get really to the base of your question, I think the next two months or so, I think you're really going to see the calendar start to shake, because we need to stop booking what we're going to be doing.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an overall comment, and then, and then one question at the end is, I know over the course of the last few years, we've had a lot of informational meetings slash workshops across the city that were very, very helpful, where the public could, could chime in and give their input on what we think we should do for Quincy 400. With that being said, I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Mason or Mr. Walker, have we incorporated some of those suggestions into the mix of Quincy 400 when it rolls out?
Through you, Mr. President, absolutely. A lot of the baseline things that we're planning to do or have done have come from those community meetings in some way, shape, or form. You know, a lot of that, that came from those community meetings weren't necessarily about, let's have a gala, or let's have a parade, or let's have a, some sort of specific kind of celebration. They were about the things people wanted to see the city do. And, you know, things like education, public safety, neighborhood parks, you know, some of the stuff that, that we've been before this body, in, in that spirit of collaboration that we, over the last four or five years, some of the things we've been able to do were a direct result of those planning charrettes. The one big item that came out of those planning charrettes, which we've talked about at, at this body before as well, is a Performing Arts Center. Planning is, continues to be underway on that, and we are hopeful and aggressive that we're going to be able to get that done and, and break ground on, on an appropriate site next year as part of the 400 celebration.
With that being said, I know that I participated in one at the Kennedy Center that was very good community meeting, where we had a lot of folks chime in on these additional items that you're talking about, Mr. Walker. I hate to bring him up again, but I, I know our colleague that's still doing his thing now from Ward 4, Brian Palmucci, was big on the Performing Arts Center, and, as well as Nina Liang as well. But they, they had pushed this envelope over the course of the years that have been up here. So I, I know if he's listening at home, he's probably laughing right now, that, oh, they're finally going to chime in on some of the things. So my last question, Mr. Walker, is, I know there's an appropriation on the agenda tonight for 600 for the open space and 600,000 for the Quincy 400. Is this particularly going to be a one, one bite at the apple, or do you anticipate you coming back for more funding?
Through you, Mr. President. TBD, Counselor. We think, again, that this will allow us to leverage a good deal of, of outside funding. But, you know, I don't want to suggest that this is, this is end-all and be-all. There are a couple of specific things in here. The heritage tree and the signage program. Now, the signage program, we have a little bit of experience with, based upon, everyone's familiar with the president's trail. It's going to be a very similar type of program, except times five, or times whatever it is. And we're working with the Historic Society to identify those sites where this kind of interpretive signage belongs. $50,000 isn't going to cover that. I can, I can tell you that right now. It's going to get us to a good place, but it's not going to cover the full, the full load on that. So I'm not going to tell you we're not going to be back, but this is certainly a good start.
As, as, as this goes along with our public and private investment, if we, if we put the public investment into the city, we see the private, and the private we put in also brings the public. So it goes hand in hand together. So this looks good for tonight. I thank you for your information and your, and, and the numbers. The numbers are very important, because we have to also understand that we're, we have some bonding in there too, as well. So we're paying down that every year, but it looks like there's pretty good profits per quarter. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Any other counselors? Okay. So again, this is two parts. So the first part is transferring $600,000 from the hotel motel tax open space account to the hotel motel tax tourism account. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion approved. Counselor Devine, second, and Counselor Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Rash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarna.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next on the item on the agenda.
Number three, 2024-01, excuse me, 021, an appropriation for 600,000 to Quincy 400 from hotel motel tax tourism.
Motion approved. Counselor Devine, you have a second. Counselor Minton, on the motion. Any counselors? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Rash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBarna.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number four, 2024-22, order nomination of Park and Recreation Board appointments.
Okay. So this is for nomination, election of the Quincy City Council to appoint three members to the Quincy Park and Recreation Board. The president opens nominations. Counselor Liang?
Here. I'd like
Here. I'd like to make a motion to nominate these three folks that are in front of us, who, I just want to say, whoever steps up in the community to volunteer their time and service on any board or commission of local government, I mean, like, they're doing the real work. And so I just think it's incredible, and want to thank these folks for stepping up and putting their name up and doing this work as well. But so I'd like to nominate Paul Brigholi, Kevin Esdale, and Thomas Lester.
Okay. Counselor Liang has nominated Paul Brigholi, Kevin Esdale, and Thomas Lester.
Second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. And a third, I guess, too. So that's good. Counselor DeBona, second in that. So without seeing any other nominations, the president moves to close nominations. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President King.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you very much. Okay. Approval of previous meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor DeBona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All those opposed? I just have it. Thank you. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards, seeing none. Unfinished business in preceding meeting, seeing none. Reports of committees, seeing none. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. The president recognizes Counselor Minton.
This time, I'd like to pay my respects to a childhood friend, James Evans, 68 of Wallaston, who passed away peacefully on February 1st after a courageous battle against cancer. Jim grew up and stayed in the Bicheau Noir area his entire life. He played football for the Apaches and then Ash Bishop Williams High School. Basketball for St. Anne's and Ash Bishop Williams, and was a regular at the well-known Mount. He was also a graduate of Northeastern University. Jim enjoyed attending sports events, especially watching ones when his nephews were playing. Jim was an avid outdoorsman, hiking through many national parks. As a member of the Blue Hills Hiking Club, he developed close friends with his fellow hikers. I would often see Jim walk in the beach or through the neighborhood. After a warm smile and greeting, he always led with a question regarding quality of life issues in the city. But you see, he truly loved the community. Hey, Dan, why did such and such happen? What could we do? Who should I call, who should I talk to? And this was followed by his educated and thoughtful opinion of the situation at hand. These questions were genuine. He cared. Counselor DeBona knows what I'm talking about. Jim would approach him, too, regarding important local issues. We met, we were eight years old, and I was blessed to know him for 60 years. He will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, the president recognizes Counselor Devine.
I'd just like to make mention that Louis P. Malvesti passed away peacefully on Thursday, February 8th. He's a retired lieutenant with the Quincy Fire Department, 40 years. Some of his time was in Ward 4. He lives in Ward 4, lived in Ward 4. A World War II Navy veteran and graduate of Quincy High. His, one of his children, he had a large family, and one of his children actually works for the city of Quincy, Janus. So our thoughts and prayers are with them and the family. Visiting hours are Wednesday, February 14th, 4 to 7, at Sweeney Brothers. And the burial will be, en masse will be at St. Mary's, 10 a.m. Thursday on the 15th. I'd just like to say personally, I had the pleasure to meet, I think he's better known as Louie, at his 100th birthday party last year. And he's a pretty impressive man. I only met him once, but I was very, I enjoyed meeting him. He is a powerful person. He had a lot of friends, and he'll be missed. So thank you, and keep their family in, in thought.
Thank you, Counselor Devine. The president recognizes Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Saturday, I had, with a heavy heart, I attended a funeral for Marie McDonough of Squanum. She died on February 1st, surrounded by the family she cherished. She was the beloved wife of the late Paul T. McDonough, retired, Boston Police Department. The cherished mother of Erin Boylan and her husband Eddie, Boston Police Department. Paula Glenn and her husband Barry, all of Squanum, and the late Liesl Radzik and her husband Rick of Quincy. She was a devoted sister of Jean Green, who, of Squanum, who many a times you'd see them traveling together, enjoying either a beautiful afternoon out on either, either, out on, out in Marina Bay, or sitting on the deck out at the Robin I Niggisson post. She was the loving Nana to Allison, Alexa, Shannon, Catherine, Emma, Brendan, and Paul. Marie is also survived by many nieces and nephews. She dedicated many years of her life working as a switchboard operator for Blue Cross Blue Shield, where her warm voice and friendly demeanor made a lasting impact on everyone who interacted with her. She also worked for the Quincy Public Schools and the Food Services for many years. Marie's true joy in life was her family. She adored her children and grandchildren. Her generous heart touched the lives of those around her, leaving a legacy of kindness and compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris.
I'd also, if I could, during, during remarks, I just would like to reach out and say thank you to the administration. We were looking at a storm tomorrow. We have some, of course, a lot of folks that get really, really nervous, and we got some good information out to folks in, at least in Ward 6, parts of North Quincy, Squanum, and Marinac Bay have been flooded during the same situation a few weeks ago, when we had those, you know, the, the full moons and the high tides and the north, northeast, the northeast storms coming in. So I want to, I want to, I want to thank the administration. I reached out to Mr. Walker early this morning, asked him if we could get a lighted billboard out just out on, on, on the causeway, so we can get as much information to people who aren't on social media. And as always, the administration and Mr. Walker came through for the people of, of my ward. So I want to thank them and hope everybody stays safe. And may, hopefully, maybe it, it'll, it'll just, you know, go away without, go away without, you know, causing any, any problems. But thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. The president recognizes Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to elaborate a little bit on the three folks that are, talked about, the Jim Emmons, Lou Malvesti, and Marie McDonough, all three great families in the city of Quincy. My deepest condolences to all of them. Jim Evans used to see all the time gardening outside his house, and he was very involved with the city. A lot of relatives involved as well that live in the particular area where, where Jim lived. And Lou Malvesti, the Malvesti family is very involved with the, with the Quincy Police and Quincy Fire throughout the years, making it to 100 years old. And the Malvesti family is still involved in the city of Quincy, employees of relatives throughout the time. And Marie McDonough, knew her very personally, very, very good family of, of the city of Quincy. So to see three strong families pass and being told tonight in front of us, it brings, brings back good memories of all three. So my deepest condolences to all the families. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Any other counselors? Okay. Let's see, just to recognize, I guess, some upcoming holidays. We've got Ash Wednesday and Valentine's Day this Wednesday. We've got President's Day coming up on the 19th, and we do have a presidential primary election coming up on March 5th, which Madam Clerk is super excited for, I'm sure. And let's see, motions, orders, and resolutions, seeing none. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings, seeing none. I hope everyone had a wonderful Lunar New Year's celebration this past weekend, and I hope everyone else enjoyed watching the Super Bowl. I proudly still don't know who won, so don't tell me. And if you're out and about this weekend, Quincy Asian Resources is hosting a Lunar New Year's celebration at North Quincy High School. So it's Sunday, the 18th, at 11 a.m. And with that, motion adjourned. Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good evening.